I will call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, undebated.
Commissioner Young, could you help in welcoming everyone to our meeting?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Want to welcome you to Cowan Township Board of Commissioners meeting. As we've decided, we're rotating welcoming's. Tonight, we have quite a few presentations. We'll see the audit of the township funds, riveting stuff. Make sure to keep awake during that. And then we have some real neat presentations, the Downingtown Library, Old Cowan Historical Society, and the Sustainability Task Force. We'll also hear about some other charity events possibly coming up and revisions to the Township Board of Commissioners meetings at times. So just want to welcome everybody and let's get to work.
Thank you, Josh. All right. Next on the agenda, citizens to be heard. Any citizens here in the township building? Do not see any hands raised?
A lot of citizens.
They are jumping up and down again. How about in Zoom? Not at this time. All right. First presentation is Malle. Do we have a representative from Malle? Oh, online? Perfect. Hey, welcome, Chris.
Hello, you can see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, both.
Fantastic. It's been a while since I've been on Zoom. I usually use Teams, so I was hoping it would work. Appreciate it. I will, I think the word used was riveting. I will try to keep it as far from dull as I can. So we are just about ready to finish up the 2023 audit. You all have the most recent draft. We received the representation letter earlier today, so I'm just waiting for my typing department to finish making it pretty, and then we'll get the final reports issued. But what you have is what you're going to get in the final report. I did provide a little four-page summary. I'm going to just kind of breeze through that real quick. That's going to cover most of the big talking points for the audit. Feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have any questions or need me to repeat anything, but I'll just dive into that summary. So the first page of that, summary of findings and results, the financial statement audit. This is your audit of the general fund, all your funds, your footnotes. That is an unmodified opinion. That's a good opinion. It's the best one you can have, which you want to have on your financials. What that means is they're free of any material misstatement. They comply with GAAP. That's generally accepted accounting principles. Those are the rules every, you know, every entity has to follow, complies with GASP. That's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That's the body that creates the rules specific to government. No scope limitations. We came in with a very lengthy list of documents that we wanted to see. And, you know, your business office, Lisa was able to provide us with everything that we needed in order to conduct the audit. No instances of non-compliance. We did have one material weakness for this year's audit. If you look at the large financial statement, you'll see the last eight, nine pages are new. That is because we have a single audit. I'll get to that in a minute. But within that section, I think on the last page of the financial, or the second to last page, you'll see we have two findings this year. One related to the financial statement section, one related to the single audit. Because there's a single audit this year, we're required to put those in your financial report. So it's a little bit of a different presentation this year. The financial finding really has to do with account reconciliation. When we came in to do the audit, we have a fair amount of adjustments that we had to make, mostly in the area of converting what's predominantly a cash basis, set of books over to the accrual basis. So a lot of adjustments to make sure payables is right, receivables is right, things of that nature. So we did want to put in a finding for that. You know, we are an independent auditor, so we don't want to do too much work as part of the audit. We can't audit our own work. We do feel that we were able to maintain independence while doing some of this work, because we're doing it sort of in conjunction with getting information from your business office. But something we didn't want to just make note of in our report, that there was a lot of adjustments as part of the audit. The next part of that summary is the Uniform Guidance Audit. That's the single audit. Goes by a few different names. Yellow Book Audit, Single Audit, Uniform Guidance Audit. This is the audit of federal money. So anytime any entity, whether it's a for-profit, nonprofit government, spends over $750,000 of federal money, it triggers this special audit of that federal spending. So in 2023, you guys spent about $1.1 million of the ARPA funds. That's the money that all the municipalities and PA got as part of COVID, COVID reparations, whatever you want to call it. So because that exceeded the $750,000, we had to audit that money specifically. We do have an adverse opinion on the Uniform Guidance Audit. The reason for that is we did have a finding related to that, which I'll get to in one second. Actually, it's in the next box. One material weakness related to the audit of the major federal awards. If you skip to the last box, you'll see it's related to reporting requirements. So.
What, what page is that on? I'm sorry.
It's, right now, this is on the first page of the four-page summary. The findings are on page 82 of the financials where they started. The fourth page from the end is where we have the financial statement audit findings. And then on the next page, it talks about the major federal award program audit findings. So is everyone able to find that or?
Yeah, we don't have page 82, but it ends at 72, and then the single audit starts.
Yes, so you should have a page. Is the second to last page, does that say Audit Citation Plan or Audit Citation Action Plan at the top?
Second to last page?
Yes.
Audit Citation Action Plan.
Okay, so if you go two pages before that.
Okay. Summary?
Yes, summary of audit results is that bullet point A. Go down to bullet point B.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three. Yes, I'm sorry, Chris. Go ahead.
Thirty-three.
It's all right.
We all found it.
Rewards thirty-three. Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's my fault. I just pulled this off our network and our typing department's already fixed page numbers. So I apologize. That's why we had to disconnect there.
We're waiting it.
All right. I appreciate it. So at the bottom of that, that bullet point B, that first one, that's the finding related to the financial statement that I just talked about with account reconciliation. And if you flip the page, there's going to be a bullet point C. Findings in question cost major federal award program audit. This is where we talk about the reporting finding. So when we audit federal awards, it's a very it's a very specific audit testing approach. There's certain things that we have to audit for each of these programs, and they're outlined by, in this case, it's the Department of Treasury. So Department of Treasury says we have to audit, did you spend the money on what you were supposed to spend it on? They also said we have to test compliance with reporting requirements. So we had no issues with allowable costs with ARPA. All the money was spent on allowable projects. Reporting, we had an issue though. So with the ARPA funds, every year, for every year ending March 30, you have to file an annual report as of April 30 of what you did with the money in the last year. So the March 30th, 23 report was not filed. My understanding is there was turnover, there was trouble getting access. Ultimately, Department of Treasury closed the report, and now you're going to be reporting your 2022, 23 information in the 23, 24 report. Basically, they said you didn't file it, but you need to catch up. But because you didn't file it, you were not in compliance with that requirement, which created the finding, which created the adverse opinion on the, the, the single audit. As soon as you're not in compliance with one of their, the requirements, that happens. It's not a big deal. You guys usually don't get federal money. My, I don't think you have enough next year that you'll even have a single audit again. So this is all going to disappear next year, but we had to report it this way this year. So that is, that's the, the two findings there, just going back to the first page of the executive summary. Major program audited was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery. We also, for low-risk audity, it says no, you are considered a high-risk audity. That's automatic because you didn't have single audits in the prior years. So your first time, single audit audity, you're automatically high-risk. It's, it's very interesting when you start getting into these single audits, especially when it's, you know, a one-off. And we had several of those with the ARPA funds. It was not unusual to, to have an occasional finding, because you usually don't work with federal money. Probably not going to work with federal money like this again. So it's, I, I don't know. We had to do it. It's a small price to pay for, you know, million, million, five of free money falling in your lap. But I don't really see that adverse opinion as a big issue from an audit perspective.
I appreciate you keeping us in check there.
Yeah, unfortunately, I hate having to issue findings for single audits, but it's, it's so, it's just like a checklist that you go down. There's just certain things you have to do, and as soon as you don't, don't fulfill it, it just, everything's automatic. So. Okay, next page of the four-page summary, summary of significant accounting estimates. Probably the biggest thing here is your net pension liability. Your police pension plan was last year, it was underfunded by about 1.3 million. This year, it's underfunded by 20,000. You're essentially, what was it, 99.9% funded? So what happened there was, two years ago, you were 106% funded. 2022 had awful investment returns, so you went down to 90. This year, you bounced back up to, to right, right around 100%. The non-uniform pension plan, now your, your non-uniform plan is through PMRS. So it's always a one-year look back. You're always one year behind on your non-uniform compared to your police. So where your police plan had a big loss in '22, and then in this year had sort of the game and the bounce back. On the non-uniform plan, you see, you went from overfunded 1.3 million in '21. Now you're underfunded. That's because you're taking the big, you know, the bad investment year this year, and then it'll bounce back next year. You're a year behind your police plan. Your minimum municipal obligations, pretty consistent year to year for both the non-uniform and the police plan. Capital assets, which is the, the last row of boxes there, your governmental activities. Cost is about 46 million, accumulated depreciation is about 24. You're about 52% through the life of your assets there. So it's, it's a good ratio. Usually, I see anything between 40 and 60. So you're right in the middle there for what I see in municipalities. You did have about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars of depreciation this year, so that's loss of value on your assets. You did have an awful lot of capital investment in the year that more than offset that. You had about 4.2 million in capital additions during '23. A lot of road projects. Barley Sheep Road, Lloyd Avenue, Municipal Drive Bridge, Moore Road Bridge, Park Drive, Reed Street, which is where most of the ARPA federal money went to. So huge amount of, of road and storm, stormwater projects. Another about 500,000 in police and public work vehicles as well. So a lot of investment there in capital assets. Anytime it exceeds depreciation, you know, it's showing investment into the township, which is always a good thing. The next page, just some key revenue and expenditure metrics. Revenue is your main revenue is taxes, pretty flat year-on-year. It's right, 7.4 million last year, went up to 7.5 this year. EIT was up about 50,000, so was real estate taxes, up about 50. The intergovernmental, you'll see the big jump there, went from 1.5, almost doubled to about 2.9 million. Part of that's going to be that ARPA money that you spent this year. That gets, even though you received that in prior years, doesn't get recognized as revenue until you spend it, which was in '23. So there's 1.1 million there of recognized ARPA funds. You also got 100,000 in Hurricane Ida, Pima reimbursement that finally came in. I saw another 153,000 for the Lloyd Bridge Signal Grant. So a lot of federal and state money coming in for the municipality to use. Golf course charges for services, down a little bit, went from 900,000 down to 800,000. Decreased there was green fees and cart rentals. Were down compared to the prior year. And then solid waste charges for services up, went from about 1.6 to 1.85. About a quarter million dollar increase that is tied directly to the rate increase that you had in solid waste from 52 to $59. So about a 13% rate increase, then right into the bottom line of total revenue increase there. Expenditure composition, public safety, usually your, your biggest expense area. Really flat year-on-year, right around 3.6 million, went up about 50,000 in '23. So that's amazing. Anytime public safety doesn't go up 5, 6, 7%, that sounds really good to me. So really good cost control there in the public safety area. Public works, highway and street, giant jump there, and that's all those capital projects that I was talking about just a couple minutes ago. Driving that up. Golf course, expenses went up 500, about 580,000 to 760, about $180,000 increase. About half of that is non-operating. Your depreciation expense was up about 30,000 in that fund. Also, the allocation pension costs over to there was about 45,000. So if you take those two things out, just day-to-day operation expense was up about 90,000. Repairs and maintenance was up about 40, and then salaries and benefits was up about 50,000 in the golf course. Solid waste, relatively flat up a little bit, went from about 1.8 million to 1.9 million. It's the contractor expenses, you know, the people that you guys paid to provide that service. The next page, last two couple slides here, long-term debt. You were at 12.3 million last year. You're down to about 11.7 this year. Nothing new, no new debt, no refundings, anything like that, but you did have about 600,000 principal payment. And then the last slide, fund balance, probably the most important slide. Probably the most important slide in the, in the whole thing. So what is fund balance? If you look at the balance sheet of any one of your funds, if you take your assets, you pay off all your debts, your liabilities, this is what's left. So the blue line, kind of starting in the middle, that's your general fund. It's trending upward nicely, went from 5.1 million two years ago to 6.2. It's up to about 7.8 million this year. That's almost dead even with your annual expenses in the general fund. So if you had, you know, all things being equal, if you had absolutely no money coming in for some reason, you'd be able to continue operating, you know, as usual out of your general fund for a year. That, that's a good, healthy fund balance to have there. The orange line, this is your other governmental funds, this is your ARPA, your capital projects, your liquid fuels. This is the one line which usually will go all over the place, depending on what you're doing. It's very much project-driven. So it was 1.3 million two years ago. It jumped up to 9.3 million at the end of '22, and the reason for that was that 8.1 million note that you guys took out for capital projects. And now what's happening is it's starting to go down as you're spending that money on your projects. So eventually, that 7.2 will, you know, get low again, and you'll decide you want to do another project. You'll go get money, and it'll shoot up again. So that's just, it's always going to go along that wave, depending on what you guys are doing. And then at the bottom, the yellow line at your, your solid waste fund balance, really flat, right around 1.3, 1.2 million a year. And below that is the golf course. $200,000 of fund balance two years ago, and the last couple of years, it's right around half of them. So, you know, your solid waste, golf course, solid, steady lines, general fund growing a little bit, and your other governmental is just, you know, going along with the projects you're doing. So I didn't see any red flags there in, in fund balance or health or anything like that. So that's, that's really all I have. I think that's all the big bullet points from the audit. I'd be happy to field any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Just the one thing I didn't hear you say, the, the employee pension plan, the non-uniform, what percentage that was? And I located it, it was 96.1% funded.
Is that this year or was that last year?
I don't know. It's on page 61. It says planned fiduciary net position as a percentage of the total pension liability.
Yes, you're right. I was, didn't quite sound right at first because of the big loss, but it was almost 120% funded last year. So you lost about 24% of, of the funding. It's still very well-funded, 96%. I'd expect by the time we, we're doing this next year, it's going to be back up over 100.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I don't, I, this might be a question, but I was just wondering, when we had taken out a bond before we received the FEMA grant money, does it reflect in the audit at all that that has dissipated or changed in any way?
You, you mean the money you borrowed or the, the spending of the ARPA money?
Well, I think we had gotten a bond before we actually received the money.
Oh, so pre-20, I'm trying to think, that money came in in '21 and '22, I think. So you're saying back in like 2020?
So we, we didn't get FEMA money yet, my understanding. We got Pima money, which is the state money, but we didn't get federal money yet.
We didn't receive it yet.
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Reach out to the residents here in the township building. Any residents have comments, questions? Not seeing any hands raised at this time. Any in Zoom? One person from Zoom? Okay. Yes, Mark, are you there?
Hey, Mark. Where are you? Yeah.
He's not showing up on the screen? Okay. Well, usually we would see name or so. Oh, that's. Mark, are you, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to.
Oh, there you go. Yes, Mark DeYoung.
Hopefully I'm on the screen. I feel sure, because it's embarrassing.
No, we see your name, so that's good.
Okay, that's good. Anyway, I talked a little while ago about a reconciliation of the FEMA money, and it seems like, from what I'm hearing tonight, and I could be totally off-base, so please take it with a grain of salt. We borrowed 8.1 million, expecting to get that amount back from FEMA and Pima. Where are we on that money? We haven't received, we haven't received anything from FEMA?
No, our township manager can answer this. Give us an update.
Good evening, Mr. DeYoung. As, at, currently, there was a preliminary. FEMA provided some preliminary estimates of what they would be providing to township. Mr. Stackhouse, who had been coordinating with FEMA, felt that was a little low, and has gone back and is currently negotiating with them. They went through another round. They requested some additional documentation, and we're waiting for a final figure. So from FEMA, no, we, we did not feel the amount that they were offering was appropriate. And on behalf of the township, Mr. Stackhouse went back to request additional funds. FEMA felt maybe they, they could provide some additional monies, and we're just waiting for the final figure.
May I ask what the original offer was?
I don't remember off the top of my head. Not, I can get that figure for you, of course.
My understanding was just six figures, not.
It was, it was low.
Yeah, it was very low.
So what do we ask back for then, as a higher amount?
I don't believe we asked for a specific figure. I think, I believe Mr. Stackhouse just demonstrated the amount funding the township has invested in stormwater projects post-Ida, and requested that they reconsider their final offer. They agreed. Then, of course, get bumped up to another round of review, and that is the play. So hopefully, when we hear back from them, it'll be a higher number. I do not know where that, that figure will land when it's all said and done. But that's, we are expecting them by, here to come from them shortly, and we'll review that and determine next steps at that time.
Okay. When we are through the final steps, and we have the offer and expenses and the money spent, can we have a presentation of maybe 10, 15 minutes of, you know, how much came from taxpayers, how much came from FEMA, and where we netted out? Could that be a simple presentation?
I think that could be.
Of course.
Yeah, that could be set up.
Okay, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
All right. Appreciate it, Mark. Any other comments?
Always the money. Sorry.
Always, always. Other comments from Zoom? Okay. Well, Chris, thank you so much for the presentation. Excellent, and I look forward to next year.
Me as well, and thanks again to, you know, everybody over there for the help in getting this audit done and doing the, the new single audit. I really appreciate that and working with you guys. So if anything else comes up, please let me know.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
All right, you too. Take care.
All right, next on the agenda, Downingtown Library budget and update. Jasmine, welcome.
Hi, how are you? I'm Jasmine Smith. I'm the new-ish director of the Downingtown Library. I've been there since February. So not quite a year yet, but enough time to kind of have my feet wet and a good idea of, of how things go day-to-day. I had a couple of extra handouts up there for you. I'm going to start with our fast facts. This covers the summer. Just to give you an idea of what do we do with the money that you contribute to the library as municipal support? So the answer is a lot. You can see highlighted on this sheet that we have children's, adults, teens, and family programs. Our family programs are something we've expanded dramatically over the summer. One of those family programs was our Happy Birthday Harry Potter drop-in party. We are pretty good at spelling. If you're not a fan of Harry Potter, that is a reference to the books. That's why it's spelled in an odd way. But we had over 300 people come to that event. I was the sorting hat. And I sorted people from ages three to 83, and everybody seemed to be having a great time. We also had Pin the Nose on Voldemort. We had a charm station where you could learn how to flick your pipe cleaner wand. We had wand making, and we, of course, had snacks, themed snacks in our program. So that was a lot of fun. We brought a lot of people in. Residents of Cowan Township are just as active with the library as many of our other municipalities. You can see we had around 4,000 or 5,000 circulations of materials to Cowan Township library cardholders. And our library cardholder base is growing. A year ago, I just ran the statistics today. We had about 10,200 library cardholders, and this year we're at 11,200. So we have a lot of people joining us and appreciating what the library offers. I also have this programs flyer for you. This is a sampling of the programs we offer. If I put them all on one sheet, the best I could do is a boring Excel spreadsheet, because they just wouldn't all fit. This is a sampling of the programs we offer. If I put them all on one sheet, the best I could do is a boring Excel spreadsheet because they just wouldn't all fit. But we have three knitting crochet fiber arts groups that meet every week and those attendees are very dedicated to those groups. We also have a gentle chair yoga that our attendees love so much that they have recently successfully lobbied to have it a second time each week. So now that it's on Mondays and Thursdays. Our board game night attendees did the same and now they meet twice a month instead of once. And they seem to have a great time. We always have about 15 people coming to the playboard games with one another. We have film forum, writers group, book club. I've highlighted our drop-in storytimes. Those are something we introduced over the summer. Our program room allows us to have about 20 children in registered programs, but our drop-ins are held out in our open space. And we had up to 80 people at a drop-in storytime. So it was a big boost in our numbers, but it's also really nice because our registered programs are relatively small. People who just aren't quite fast enough to snag one of those spots can still come to the drop-ins. They don't need to worry about any sort of registration apps. And those children and their families get to enjoy storytime as well. So we've been really happy with that. And we do also do more community outreach based opportunities. So we have Pennsylvania Career Link coming to the library once a month. And we also have a representative from representative's office coming once a month as well. They do sit outside my office and I can tell you that many people sign up for their Septic cards. That is the number one draw when the representative's representative is in the library. And we also have sort of our 2023 summary sheet here. We're not through 2024 yet, but I can tell at this point that our customer visits probably be up a little bit. Our circulation should be pretty similar to last year. And I think the big jump is going to be in program attendance because we've adjusted some of those programs to accommodate more people. We're seeing our program numbers climb year over year. So with all of that activity happening, I provided a budget request to the committee. We are currently seeing about a $3 per capita contribution from Calum, which is wonderful. We do split you guys with Coatsville Library. So everything is based on half of the township population. We would like to ask for a slight increase, which is going to help us do a couple of things. One of those things is that we are in the process of hiring a staff person who will serve as a children's program assistant. When we have 80 people at a children's program, it would be really helpful to have two adults running that. Even if we just have somebody who can adjust the microphone while our children's coordinator is during storytime. So we're finding that we need an extra pair of hands to accommodate the number of people who are coming to our children's programs. And we also want to be able to bring in more high-quality STEM programs. We had two programs from the Marshall State Museum over the summer, which were really wonderful engineering and mechanical based programs. The museum is about trains. So it's all train related information. And I think the kids had a great time. But those types of programs used to be a little more expensive than some of our other programs. So that's an area that we would like to expand our offerings as well. Are there any questions about the library programming?
I don't have any questions. Just a couple of comments. First, just a full disclosure, I'm privileged enough to serve on the Downingtown Library Board. And want to make sure everybody knows that. There's a couple of events coming up that people in the audience could attend. Do you want to just take a minute to talk about the Brew Down?
Sure. So October 26th is the D-Town Brew Down. That is one of our two biggest fundraisers over the course of the year. If you like craft beer, we will have a good number of local brewers there. They will be offering samples of their various beers and you get to vote for your favorites and winning breweries get a prize. So you just want to taste what's happening locally. This is a really fun opportunity to do that. Personally, I'm not a brewer person, but I know a lot of people really enjoy that and look forward to the event. We're also having a brand new and what I hope will be very fun event on November 15th, which is a jigsaw puzzle contest. That is more my speed. And so we're going to be able to have people register for teams up to four people and everybody gets the same jigsaw puzzle. Time it and we see who finishes first. So I think that's going to be really fun, but I'm also a librarian. So you know, you're.
And then also the Friends Book Sale.
Yes, the Friends Book Sale starts Friday. So that's tomorrow, tomorrow at four o'clock. We have thousands of books that are currently laid out in the library. If you are like a Black Friday enthusiast, come at four, stand in line, fight people for books. Like to enjoy your books in a slightly more calm and quiet manner, wait until 5:30. It goes until seven o'clock. By the first hour and a half, things have quieted down and then it actually continues through the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And the sale goes for quite a while. The regular sale will go week. Sale where you can get a bag, fill it up for. So it'll actually go to the end of March. I think the last day is October 26th. So we've got a lot going and the book sale does turn the library upside down. It's just all tables full of.
But the Friends do an incredible job of that and it helps fund the library. So if you're looking for a used book or, you know, something like that, they have DVDs and puzzles.
DVDs, we have CDs, they have boxes and boxes. I'm told that they have another 25 boxes of puzzles still in reserve that they haven't had room to put out yet. So if you're into puzzles, we've got you covered. Come to the book sale and then show off your skills on the 15th of November.
And I just want to acknowledge Jasmine. She's doing an amazing job of director of the library. And we're, you know, moving forward and really growing and prospering. And just want to also recognize Francine Day, who's our board chair, who does an incredible job and helps raise money. Putting all these events on so that, you know, we can be a prosperous library.
The last thing I'll say is definitely not. But we are pushing the boundaries of our building. We are just coming out the seams. It's especially apparent when we have the book sale going on and the storage we have in our building. But also some of these really big programs and storytimes. You know, we have adult programs, we have children's programs, we have one room to have them in. So we need to schedule things really strategically. And we do have a pretty small space to do that in. So within the next couple of years, we are looking at an expansion project. So I imagine when I come back and talk to you in a year, probably talking a lot more about plans for expansion and what that might be. So just to put that on your radar. Any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Shared it. I, I think Tony would like a book on trails, the benefits of walking. Oh, really?
All right.
So he can bring you a, a book about trails. And benches.
Ventures of the church.
That's an inside joke. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next presentation, Old County Historical Society. Who do we have? Don, welcome.
Hello. Hi, Don.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Good night. I'm not very good at this. Don Coghlan, 4019 Edges Mill Road, Calum Township. I'm here tonight representing the Old County Historical Society. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for inviting me. As most of you know, we are a private nonprofit organization dedicated to our mission to research and preserve the 300-year-plus rich history here in Calum. I am here to share some of our achievements this past year and our goals for 2025. We continue to research historic properties and then share that historical research with the public by posting it on our OCHS website. And on the Calum Township website and in West Chester University's website. We find and we place, as many of you know, these green and white markers on historic resources that are all around Calum Township and it's a very popular and ongoing program. We have three that are going to be here next week. So we're very excited about that. We have a new project and we're partnering with the Calum Historic Commission and Calum Township to scan and curate historic photos of Calum Township. We have a kickoff here in this room on Saturday, November 9th at 1:00 PM. And we invite everybody and anybody to come. If you have any historic photographs of Calum Township, there's been information out on our Facebook page, on the Township Facebook page. So bring us what you have. We would love to start building and curating those resources. December 10th, we'll find us hosting our annual Christmas candlelight program, featuring the students from Calum Elementary School Chorus. The incredible Meister singers who we think are just amazing and we love having them year after year. And this year, the 49ers are coming back to join us as well. Our first annual Christmas Historic House Tour will feature two private homes from the 1700s decorated in their holiday finest. Our society is supported by the helping hands of youth in a local Boy Scout troop and the Thorndale Fire Company. We are always seeking more partnerships and we invite you all to join us in our efforts to share and celebrate our history here in the heart of Chester County. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Just for Dawn.
I just wanted to say, you know, you guys have done a great job of coming back together after rough. A lot of people don't might not know this, but Old County Historical Society was directed by some couple of elderly individuals who did a wonderful job, but during COVID, it all got a little too hard and we lost one of them. Did we lose both now? So this group of people sitting here, I can say are responsible for pulling it all back together and working really hard to make it work with the Historical Commission as well. Starting to do some partnerships and things. So great job.
Thank you.
President Patty DeFosia has one of our latest acquisitions. It's a number of arrow points and spear points that are from the Pollock Farm. They were collected by Dan Jeffries when he was a kid. And Pollock Farm was located where the Downingtown High School is over in that direction by Rock Raymond. So he just recently donated those to us. So we're really proud of those. We wanted to share those with all of you.
We all know who Dan Jeffries is.
Thank you, Mark, for your kind words.
Oh, no.
Dan, yeah, Dan Jeffries opened up Jeffries Farm Market. And his wife is, is a Zen related to the farmers that farmed Spackman Davis Farm for many, many decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
It's like sleep. This is on the property. It was amazing. Thank you so much.
In case Dawn didn't plug it, definitely whenever they are open over at the Historical Society in Calum Meeting House, you need to visit. A lot of history there.
Wow.
Oh, yeah.
That's something. That arrow hits.
Next on the agenda, we have presentation for Sustainability Task Force.
Hey.
We are excited to hear this one.
What's this?
We have Joellen. Just welcome.
Any people. Hello. Hi, I am Joellen. I live down the street. And I'm also on the Calum Sustainability Task Force with some other amazing people. And I'm here to do a progress update because I think it's been six months. And so we felt like we needed to do a update for everybody so that you know what, that we've been doing stuff. And not just sitting around hanging out with Abby. Okay, so a few of the members are here tonight with me, but we are quite a large task force. So there's me, Joella McBride. We have Helen Echelwiner, Lindsay Beecher, Suzanne Spears, Gavin Spears, Anne Duzen, Mike Erin, Cheryl Spalding and Abby Swan and Don Vemizal, Vimazal? Vimazal. Woo, totally practice this, right guys? No, just kidding. So our task was if, if our name didn't, you know, spell it out for you, but we are supposed to be creating a report to detail any sustainability-related recommendations that we have for the Board of Commissioners. And how we have been doing that is we have been meeting monthly here in this very room. Sharing resources and also speaking with experts. So an example of that is recently we had the Sustainability Director for the Chester County Planning Commission come and give a talk at one of our meetings and just talk to us about, you know, their, their journey through planning their, their wonderful sustainability report. I think that's it. Yeah. So this is where we are so far. So we have come up with six areas that we are focusing on. So we are focusing on water management, waste management, transportation, energy, biodiversity and conservation and Mark Evans, apparently.
And Mark Evans.
Just kidding. It's actually administrative, which just means like township-focused things that the municipality can do. The goals of our report are to make it, we, we want it to be easy to understand, of course. We want it to be comprehensive. But we also want it to be achievable. So to, to do that, we've basically been aligning a lot of our goals and recommendations to things that the township is already kind of doing. So that is one wonderful thing that we have discovered as a task force. Like the, the township is actually already doing a lot. So it's very easy for us to come up with more recommendations for the township. So we came up with four areas that we kind of focus our recommendations to. So our recommendations can be assessment and explorations. They can be policy recommendations. They can also be actions that can be taken like now or in the future. And then we also have outreach recommendations for the township. I think that's it. So these are just, we're, we're going to go through three examples in a couple of the areas that we identified. So in the topic of biodiversity and conservation, we, we have, for example, some recommendations to adopt policies to strengthen tree and woodland protections. So we all know that trees and woodlands are important and we also know that development happens and the township needs to grow. So, but there are ways to sort of balance this with some zoning codes and other recommendations. So we just have some of them listed up here on the slide. The first one is very technical zoning codes, but basically it's just saying to limit the disturbance of woodland distraction to 50% instead of 60%. So it's like a very simple thing that you could just sort of implement and be like, hey, guys, this is what you have to do now. Sorry. In SALDO, you could include measures that protect the trees that are remaining on a construction site from construction activities that could be damaging to the trees. So it's basically just like telling people, be careful, don't hurt the trees, guys. Come on. You can also prohibit disturbing specimen trees and PNDI sites unless there's no feasible alternative. So you, like, construction companies would need to explore other options if they were going to actually disturb or hurt some of the native plants and trees that we have. And then this last one is actually really fun. So so it would calculate the required tree replacement based on the number and the size of trees removed rather than on a per lot basis. So right now it's two to three per lot. But what this new recommendation would say would be, hey, look at the actual size and number of trees and figure out how many trees you would need to plant to make up for what you just cut down. So hopefully it would keep them from chopping down the really big, pretty trees, you know, like that would be nice, maybe. Okay, waste management, super important. So actually though, you will be happy to know that the township actually does better than the national average in recycling.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, we do better than the national average at recycling. So like the national average in 2018 was 32%. The township actually does 38%, which is, which is, that's good. So we said, oh, it would be great as a recommendation to set a slightly higher goal of 40% and just round it out right there. Wouldn't that be great? And then we have recommendations for ways the township can do that. So like exploring composting programs and then also creating a recycling campaign to educate residents on like where they can take harder to throw away things, you know, like electronics, fun stuff like that. And then the last one is transportation, right? Yes. Okay. And so one of our recommendations has to do with improving safety and access for pedestrians and cyclists. So a lot of people driving through our township to get to other places. I mean, there's fun stuff to do here too, obviously, but like there is a lot of driving and we would just really like to see the township be more pedestrian and cyclist friendly, especially when like the trail gets built through and things like that. It would just be really nice if the township was more walkable and people could spend more time walking around instead of driving everywhere. So some of the recommendations we have for doing that are like implementing traffic calming techniques, completing the sidewalk system. It would be really great if there was a sidewalk to the acne from my house. I would love that, actually. I'm putting that requested now. And also coordinating with PennDOT for the upcoming Route 30 bypass expansion to allow for safe pedestrian and cyclist passage in all of those awesome places. It would just be really great if we could ride our bikes and walk around instead of driving. I would love that so much. Oh, okay. So we still have stuff to do because we still have to actually like compile the report. We have a lot of ideas and we've got them mostly organized, but now we have to make the report pretty for everyone to see. We're also going to be engaging with more local experts. So we still have a couple more meetings until April 2025, when we hope to have this all done. So we're going to invite some more experts to talk about specific things that we've identified in our in our resources that we want to learn more about. And yeah, we should have final recommendations by April 2025 because we're making such good progress because we're amazing. That's the end. Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Excellent presentation. Guys are doing a lot of good work.
Yeah, I loved the, you know, talking about doing tree surveys where people are going to develop every time a developer comes in here. And we say anything of, or not even to the developer sometimes, that I know when some of the zoning workshops, we were saying, why don't you keep the existing trees and work around? Oh, they're all dead.
Oh, yeah.
They're all invasive. I would really like to see an accounting of which ones are dead and because yeah, it's, thank you for all you're doing. I'm very excited about this. I know who these people are, believe me. Thank you.
Excellent group. Thank you so much. Looking forward to the report.
Yes.
We will not hesitate to implement those.
Oh, no.
Is the end of our presentation? There's no more present. Does anyone else want to present? We're just in a good mood now. I guess we can move on to our Township Manager, Mr. Vimazal. Believe me, it took me a while to learn that. Vimazal, okay?
You say Vimazal, I say Vimazal.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Hey, Don.
I just a couple of items this evening. The first two action items on the agenda are related to meetings, schedules for the rest of the year. The first would be November meetings. We do have a conflict. Many of the board members brought to my attention on November 14th. And then of course, the 28th is Thanksgiving. We can certainly have a meeting if the board would like to, but I've heard.
I would be zooming in.
After circulating and looking at some dates potentially for a rescheduled November meeting. It seems to be November 12th. That's Tuesday. But works for members of the board. So that would be the recommendation would be to reschedule the meeting to November 12th for November.
Commissioners, we're all in agreement for the 12th?
That's a Tuesday?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So with that, we would just need to entertain a motion to cancel the November 14th and the 28th meetings and reschedule for 11, 12?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye. Motion passes five zero.
And this is typical, just for anyone who hasn't been to a meeting this time of year, we have to do this every year. It's not like we're just trying to cut back on meetings. This is these holidays.
And on the 12th, we are discussing the budget?
That's correct.
Okay. Mark, DeYoung, I just want to make sure you heard that. Okay, we changed the day because last year everything got messed up and you missed it. So I'm just putting it out there. I know you'd like to join us on this.
We will be sure to advertise it on the website and get it on the board out there. We'll make sure.
He's our money man, so he keeps us in check. All right, and next, December meeting?
It's a similar request. The current, the last meeting of the month is the final Thursday is on December 26th, the day after Christmas. My understanding is in the past that meeting has been canceled for the holiday, which would mean the workshop and business meeting will both take place on the second Thursday of December, December 12th. So this would be a request, recommendation to cancel the December 26th board meeting. The board would so choose.
Wait a minute.
Good with that?
As I'll be in Australia, I might make that motion.
That's December 20th.
Has been moved.
Could you repeat that again, please?
Currently, there's a board meeting scheduled on December 26th, the day after Christmas.
Right, which is the holiday. Okay, so that's canceled. So we're making a change.
Once we vote on it, Lorraine.
That's my name.
Officially, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Meeting has been canceled. Should have everything on that first meeting in December.
Thank you very much. We will make sure this is advertised appropriately in the Daily Local, be on the Township website and social media. We'll get the message out there about these changes.
Perfect.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda, we have an update to Davis Farmhouse roof replacement, I believe.
It's all Ross's name. Yeah.
Here to cover some of the specifics, but a lot of work has gone into this project and excited to see it underway.
It's not a meeting until we see Ross. Welcome, Ross. Oh, hey. Him, Ross's helper.
Yes, my little assistant.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. All right, so to give you an update about the farmhouse roof, you'll probably remember from a previous meeting that we were going to put together a site meeting to go out and look at a few more of the features of the building, especially the porch on the south a little more closely to see if we could maybe preserve some of the historic elements of that. So we did convene a meeting and the contractor was there as well as some of the township staff and a few members of Gilmore and Associates, my company. And so our contractor, Detweiler Roofing, that was the low bidder. I think that we're pretty fortunate with them because they were describing a number of historic preservation and restoration type projects that they've done. So they have a good amount of experience in that area. And so they came and we looked at a number of things together and they had a lot of really good suggestions, I think, about ways that we could just do things a little bit differently and preserve some of the features there. So for example, on the underside of the porch structure on the south side of the farmhouse, like so the main porch, we can preserve this like sawn lumber beams that are holding up the structure. So they have like a very historic feel to them. And also we can save the posts which have, they're pretty decorative. There's like a nice like architectural elements to them as well as some of the decorative woodwork up at the top of the posts, like right under the ceiling. So we've determined a way to preserve all of those features. And then the railings, we're going to now do like a wood railing that's very similar to the ones that were existing before. They'll be new because most of them are gone or deteriorated, but what we can put back will be quite similar to what was there originally. So I think those are like a number of really good changes that we came up with. There's a couple other miscellaneous things, but those are the bulk of them. And then the contractors seem very cooperative. It seemed like a really collaborative process. And there's some of the work, some of the changes were more work, some were a little bit less work. And so it seems like we have worked it out that we think this is just going to be cost neutral so that, you know, we get these changes that I think will make everybody happy. And we're not really anticipating that it'll increase the cost of the project. So we were quite happy with the outcome of that meeting and coordination. And then, so that just, we took a little time to put that meeting together and do some follow ups from that. So we probably now are looking at actually starting the work like in the next week or two, whereas we were thinking we would start probably on Monday of next week. So probably push back, you know, another week or two, but I think that was time well spent with those changes.
Fantastic.
Commissioners, any comments, questions?
It's just so, we're so lucky that we got Detweiler, you know, that someone who actually cares.
And appreciates the value.
Appreciates what it is, can look at it and say, because I think the original plan was just rip the whole thing off and start again. And no, that's beautiful. It's really exciting. And I think a roof color was picked, yes?
Yes, yeah, the township selected the aged bronze color.
Fantastic. That should look lovely.
Yeah.
Thanks so much, Ross.
Sure thing. Thank you very much for your time.
And any questions from residents? Sure. One comment here in the Township Building saying, saying it sounds wonderful. Thank you. Penny in Zoom. Ross, you're incredible. Thank you so much.
Yes, my pleasure. I will see you again in a few weeks.
All right, that's good.
Take care.
Oh, oh, I like this one. Don, what do we have?
There's a new charity event that the County Township Police Department will be participating in. This program's been around for several years in the past. County Township had not participated, but a number, I think 22 police departments throughout the county as of last year were participating. This is an initiative where for the three months, October, November, and December, officers, whereas traditionally the department has a grooming policy, a facial hair policy that's very strict. There's no facial hair allowed on officers. But for the three months, October, November, December, those who wish to participate in this charity would pay, I believe it's a couple hundred dollars and they would be allowed, permitted to grow a beard during that period. I'm very curious to see which officers are going to be participating and how successful they will be. But the funds raised through this program will go to a number of Chester County charities. Night For Her, the San Buco Children's Case Fund, Child's Life, Chester County Crime Victim Center. That money will be equally distributed towards good charities in the county. I know the chief and officers are looking forward to helping to give back in that way. In your packets, there's also of course, an update to the policy which would allow officers to participate in this program if they choose. It's voluntary, of course. But that initiative is underway. This chief I know wanted to present this to the board this evening. Is it, it's going to be a change, just in case members of the public see officers with facial hair. It's for a good cause.
Is the chief growing a beard?
I.
Is that why he's not here? It's in that rough phase right now.
We will see. That's to be determined.
It's great.
I think it's a wonderful idea because I usually have facial hair.
Great question.
Thank you. And for those, I assumed the question was, is there an opportunity for the public to participate and donate? And yes, there will be and we'll be making sure to have that on the Township website, on social media and we'll share that out. So if anyone would care to support, I don't know if it's sponsoring an officer, but supporting charities in the program itself, of course. Thank you.
Good question.
And don't anyone get any ideas of starting odds on gambling on whose beard comes in the fastest and stuff like that? That's no, not, not cool.
All right, comments from Zoom? And this time, looking forward to seeing some of the police officers. No dying.
Yeah, I hope that people don't think that they're wearing blue beards. I know it's just because of the uniform, but you know, you think they're really going to walk around with a dyed blue beard? A blue beard? Yeah, people get that idea.
Thank you, Don. All right, next on the agenda, board minutes to approve for September 26th. Any questions, comments?
Just a comment. I'll be abstaining because that wasn't here. Me too.
We have two abstain. Three of us that attended, so entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
A move.
The move, moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got three with two abstain. Minutes have been approved. Next, Finance Department. We have a check run, 52,818 to 52,882. Any comments, questions on the bills? Do you have time? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. So moved. It has been moved.
Second.
And a second.
Like an auction now. So.
By Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, checks have been approved. Oh, there are board liaisons. Okay. We will start off with parking wreck.
Parking wrecks.
And we have most of them here, so this is exciting.
You guys, if I, if I miss anything, just chime in, please. So as you guys know, parking wrecks, this is our busy time of the year and fun time for everyone. The kids of all ages can join in with all the festivities and activities that we're sponsoring throughout the rest of this year. I believe that this Saturday, there are two events. Are we doing the meadow seating on Saturday? And we're going to meet here at the Township Building at 10 o'clock? At 3 o'clock? But then there's also a Callan cleanup crew that's going to be getting together this Saturday as well.
That's at 10.
We'll be meeting here at the Township at 10 and they're going to be working on Lincoln Highway.
So we're actually going to be doing Black Horse Hill Road right by the VA.
Okay.
It was recently brought to my attention that it's, there's a really trashy strip along there. So we're going to park at the VA and everyone who signed up has gotten that information, but we still have room for more people. So parking lot G on Saturday.
parking lot G on Saturday morning, come and help us clean up some trash.
Did everyone hear that? Parking lot G at the VA Medical Center. And then we also are planning for our annual Halloween party and trunk or treat. That's going to be held on October the twenty-sixth and it's going to be filled with a lot of fun and activities with the scavenger hunt. You know, the candy corn, guess how many? And also we'll have uh Shannon Cooper's dance troupe. Those guys do an amazing job with the kids with the trunk or treat dance exhibits and they plan so many uh fun things for the kids. I mean, uh, they just make everything so much better. Bringing all the extra activities in. Um, also we'll be having, getting ready for our holiday tree lighting. And that's going to be held on December eighth. With the maestro singers, Santa will be arriving, hot chocolate cookies, smores. We'll probably think of some other things. Did you want to announce the trip at this, the, the trip? No, maybe not.
I can. So we are once again, after a hiatus, uh doing one bus trip to New York this year. Uh, December fourteenth and the tickets are selling fast. So um tomorrow morning, I'm going to put the link out uh on Facebook and on the township website. And I have a feeling we'll be full by the end of the day, but we can only get one bus. So better, better than nothing, but uh next year. We might need a couple.
Okay, that's going to be fun. So hopefully we'll be, once I, I, I'm sure once it hits the website, it's going to be a sellout. So I don't know. Soon she pushed that button, it's, it's over. And Helen, you're going to be our host? Isn't, isn't she going to host? Who's going to host?
Uh, Isabel.
Isabel.
Come back.
Who's going to host? Okay.
And Helen will be helping with the OCHS uh tour fundraiser. Yeah.
So that'll be fun. So, all right. So we're back up and running and full speed ahead with lots of other things, looking down into the spring, our playgrounds and parks and things that we were uh anticipating for twenty twenty-five budget. And as always, you're welcome to get on board. In regards to COG, our last meeting was held on September twenty-fifth. And we uh, uh, instead of a traditional meeting, we met uh at the uh Chester County, what is it over there? Training campus. And we were featured with experts to guide us into the impact of planning and zoning issues in our municipalities. And what does it really look like and how it impacts, you know, the trajectory of, you know, how we want our townships to look. And that's why we're spending so much time now, you know, working on rezoning so that we can have a picture of what we want our township to look like. And how we want to see it in the future. I mean, we're talking like, we're planning now to see what we look like in the next ten years. You know, so that's just how far in advance we have to think because things are coming so fast. And we have to control, you know, these builders and investors and, you know, how they're coming into the township and what we will permit. You know, same with the sustainability group, you know, we're there as well to make sure that Calend Township remains a beautiful place to live, raise families, to grow, to work. And, you know, so it was good hearing it. It was from some local attorneys from Chester County. And they gave a lot of good information, a lot of feedback on um zoning and law use, uh regional multi municipal planning. Uh, also zoning hearing procedures and what that looked like. And we as commissioners and other governing bodies throughout um western uh Chester County uh had input and shared ideas on, you know, what they want their municipalities to look like in the future as well. Thank you.
Jane? Report. Municipal Authority. Uh, excuse me. At uh September's meeting, uh we approved an approachment agreement to allow the property owners of on the fifteen hundred block of Reed Street to install a fence in the sanitary sewer easement. Representatives from the authority hosted two meetings on September sixteenth, one in the afternoon, one in the evening, uh with property owners of Cal Meeting House in Granger Lane. Ah, yay. I'm looking at you. All right, uh, so the residents have the opportunity to learn more about the sewer extension project that's going on uh or soon be going into their neighborhood. Uh, then the phase one portion of the Ray Road Emergency Stabilization Project began on September sixteenth, which consisted of an emergency stabilization of existing sewer main by concrete encasing the main in two locations and armoring the street banks in those locations with the rip rap that we love to see. Uh, to prevent further erosion in that area. The contractor completed the work on September twenty fourth. And for Dara, something a little better update. Uh, Dara met with West Whiteland and Euclid Townships in September about their flow projections and the future expe- excuse me, expansion. Uh, both townships showed an interest in moving forward with the project. That is good news. Uh, modernization of project for Dara is still in the process. Working on uh the design permitting, financing and possible grants for the modernization project. That's exciting. Uh, fire department, uh, we did not meet, but just as a reminder, they have an open house this Saturday uh between eleven and two. All right, you're going to see fire demonstrations, truck tours, the equipment display. Uh, I hear Sparky the dog is going to show up. And I'm reading this right off the website, so I just jotted my notes. And uh, some barbecue. Can never go wrong with some barbecue. So uh, you know, if you're not in one of, at, at one of the parking wreck events, stop on in here and uh support our fire department. All right, next, uh historical commission.
Welcome everyone to the historical commission rundown. You know, I, we had to cancel our meeting in September, so uh things, things got a little too uh, too busy there for everyone, but we are meeting next Wednesday. That is the sixteenth, I believe. We'll be meeting right here live at seven PM. You can all join us by Zoom, but we're a lot more fun in person. We did have our last schoolhouse tour of the year this past Sunday. It's always sad when that last tour uh happens, but we had a nice group of our own uh members of the historical commission there hanging out uh together. And we had a nice turnout of, of tourists, especially considering that we were up against uh Downingtown Fest. So um, you know, we, it just keeps getting better. And I, I want to tip my hat to Tom Parr, who did a wonderful job maintaining the flower beds around that, that schoolhouse this year. We're very excited uh about what's coming in the future. Uh, I'm not going to make this meeting go any longer because uh I want to get home.
Right, you know what? I got to give a shout out to Tom Parr too. I, because I drove by earlier and I was wondering what he was doing there. He's walking back and forth and he was setting things up. He was, he was ahead of the game.
Oh, yeah.
So thank you, Tom, if you're online. All right, and uh, last but not least, Lincoln High, oh, wait a minute. Not last, no, we, second, second to the least, I don't understand. Lincoln Highway, sorry.
So uh, at our last meeting, we discussed um the tone property um uh plans. Um, we went quite in depth into them. We discussed the marijuana ordinance um and how that affects Lincoln Highway. Um, we also uh talked a little bit about the zoning uh task force as most of us are also on the zoning task force. And um, what was the last thing we?
Sign ordinance.
Oh, the sign ordinance. Um, and trying to um go over that once more before it gets presented to the zoning task force. So that's it.
Josh?
Oh, the historical protection ordinance. I'm sorry.
All right. Ingleside Golf Course.
Hi, this is Lorraine Tindaro, and I'm going to be talking about Ingleside Golf reports a robust September revenue of eighty-three thousand dollars and twenty-seven hundred rounds played for the month. Interviewing several people for the golf pro hiring. Also a golf shop manager and two more staff people. Planning events and fundraisers for twenty twenty-five. The roof repair for the pro shop, it will be fixed. We're looking into insurance claims to cover the cost. Dead trees have been cut down by Public Works. We're working on airifying the greens for grass health and growth. Thanks again. Bye.
Thanks, Lorraine. All right, next on the agenda, additional business. Any at this time? From the Commissioners, great, uh, public comment. Reach out to the township here. They're all excited. Not sure if it's just to end the meeting or, you know, get home or just about everything we discussed. Uh, how about in Zoom? Not at this time. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved in second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.